Sherry, what's new?
Hello. Okay. We are about to begin. Tonight is Tuesday, October 11th. Athens City Council is meeting in a series of four committee meetings. First up will be Finance and Personnel, then Planning and Development, City Services, and ending up with the committee of the whole. Generally, there's not a lot of direction from the President. I'm President Pro Tem. President Mr. Bias is not here today, so the committees just kind of flow. If we need anything, we'll go from there. So we will begin with Finance and Personnel. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to Service Safety Director Paula Lain Nozley.
Hi, good evening. We have some additional appropriations we'd like to bring forward next Monday, and those include: we have a quote for some roof repair at the armory. The armory is continuing to experience damage because we've not repaired that at this point in time. And we have a quote for around $30,000 to secure that and stop the, at least the water being, if I can say. In addition, I have a request from the Fire Chief for $17,000 for airbags. These are used, they're placed in each of the vehicles, and they're used in case they need to lift a vehicle, you know, in whatever incident that they may come to. They have outlived their useful life and had to be removed from the vehicle, so right now we don't even have them. When I ask them, well, how often are they used? You can't say, you know, but it could be that opportunity to save that life at some point in time. Under this, I'd like to also ask for authorization to dispose of our DARE Porsche vehicle that was donated to us a few years back. Unfortunately, it's not able to function for the officer, so we'd like to be able to dispose of that by sealed bid with a minimum. I don't have that minimum pricing yet. I'd like to do a little more research on that before. And the right to reject any and all bids and offers. So, you know, I've asked the Green Fleet Committee to convene regarding the replacement of a DARE vehicle, whether or not that will have multi-use or, in the past, it's kind of been a single-use vehicle, and I've asked them to look at that.
No, I just wanted your mic's on.
Oh. Good to tell you.
Sound good over here. Any questions about appropriations?
I thought we got money for, for the DARE vehicles were ones that came to us from...
You mean confiscated forfeit?
Yeah.
No, this last, the Porsche was a donation from a reserve officer, I believe.
Correct, okay.
Who wanted that.
I always thought it was...
The Sheriff's Department does that. I don't think we have anything that we confiscated of that kind of value that's able to function or reuse or re-enter or even enter into our fleet, so.
Well, I always thought it was a bad kind of precedence to show kids that this is the sort of vehicle that you can confiscate from drug raids.
Interesting.
My son comes home and says, "Oh, they have a Porsche," you know? So, I would, maybe when we replace the vehicle, something that would also be of educational value with alternative fuels and such, you know, they are going to kids, and I think that that's something that kids are very interested right now, and so I think that I would encourage that. Maybe work with Hocking College?
You know, the highway traffic?
Yeah.
Is that part of the Green Fleet that we're talking about?
This is the recommendation I'll pass along to the Green Fleet Committee. I'm actually not going to sit on it because they make recommendations to me.
But DARE goes around to Halloween and all sorts of stuff, and so I think that it would be a great educational opportunity, not only for kids, but for everybody, to kind of show, so.
And I've already expressed this, I think that in today's world, nobody is driving their vehicles home. That's one of the measures that the administration took to reduce the costs, and so I was going to argue strongly for a multi-use vehicle, even if it's burning French fry oil, so we can all go.
Why not, if the Porsche was never really taken?
Oh, kids would love that.
Yeah, no. I would love if they had a, if it was a car that somebody else could drive for another shift, because we're going to be up against the car situation eventually, I guess, or you will be.
Okay, now we are requiring both roof and somebody pointing, that's why the price is what it is. Some of the flashing needs to be, and the mordant where the flashing meets is deteriorating, just so you know.
Will you be doing this without competitive bidding?
The armory is in need of repair now, so I was going to ask for an emergency clause in there.
And I write not to go through.
The emergency clause would obviate a bidding process, but if it's council's wish to step back and go through that, we can, so.
I mean, I think it worked really well on the law administration building, if you've been watching. If you've done roofs on your house lately, you have an idea of how good it looks.
In addition, I would like to request, and I know this wasn't stated earlier, but we have an over, almost $2,000 repair to one of our cruisers, of which the police chief is moving money now, but in that appropriation ordinance that will be up for second reading next Monday, that includes the transfer. He did not request additional money, but transfer from his 100 lines into his 200, 300.
So, it's already there, we don't need to amend that? I wasn't sure what you said.
We need to suspend.
We will have to.
We would have...
Suspend.
Suspend, thank you. That's what they were, technology, I'm supporting next Monday, so. That's a moment in time, that's all I have, but we're pinned into the last quarter of the year, yes.
In the appropriations, that's what we just covered. Now we're talking about the Franklin-Grover slip, which also...
I forgot something.
Oh, okay.
We haven't discussed it yet, so I don't know. We are looking at our IT system as a whole. I think you're aware, a few weeks ago, that we went down, we didn't have telephone service to our Public Works Department, where Code kind of went into a general messaging. So I've asked Ron Forrest, our IT Director, to provide some other opportunities and look at this. I don't have a fully comprehensive view of it yet, but from DBI Technology, who are the entity that came down, climbed the tower, fixed the radios, we got struck by lightning, it's hard to think, but three times, three different places. And a total at this point is around $85,000, but it would be spread across the different departments in terms of that, so if we could take a closer look at that, and I can send it around to Finance and Personnel Committee to look at the associated costs and recommend...
These are recommendations for improvements.
Correct.
Just wondering what type of improvements they are, whether replacing equipment that got fried or putting in lightning protection.
If they have lightning suppression on each one of these, there are three different locations, and they would have that. In addition, they'd have essentially backup radio transmitters in order to keep our Internet and our phone system working.
And you can get cables that actually ground out better. In other words, really, coaxing cables that have lightning, basically metal wrapped, so it comes, doesn't actually fry the inside, but goes through the outside.
Seems like a big investment after, I don't remember what the final tally was on it, system, it was probably half a million?
It was almost $600,000, so to me, $85,000 is probably just keeping up with the technology and giving us a better product. I've asked, I had asked them to look to get additional quotes, so Horizon was pretty expensive for service, so.
Insurance covers part of this?
On our lightning strikes, some of the, some of the radios were under warranty, and so we're receiving those products back, but it still doesn't address the suppression of lightning or power outages, so. Thank you.
Sorry, one more question. Did the outage interfere any with emergency communications in the city?
We have already hardwired into the police department an old line, I don't know if you call it that. I think a rotary dial, but essentially...
There's an optic system between both, so the large building doesn't go down, the city hall doesn't go down, Code went down, Recreation went down.
Public Works?
Public Works went down.
Arts West, Parks West.
And of course, I think Fire Station 2 is okay? I forget.
Fire Station 2 was actually fine.
So, non-essential mostly?
Well, it depends, Public Works, if you have an emergency, that's a problem right there. We've got some calls, people try to get through to Code and weren't able to.
So, we'll hear more about this...
Yes.
Next week, Monday?
Hopefully by next Monday.
Do we have an ordinance up for reading? Is that what you're saying?
If we, if I have all the information and you're satisfied with the information I sent to you this week.
I mean, it seems like we have very few options.
We do. And we build down according to...
This is a lightning rod, in effect, right?
And some additional equipment.
Okay.
Franklin-Grover slip, Monday? Who was going to speak to that?
Okay.
You finish that?
Yes. We would like to begin an appropriation for a bill now for the Groverner Street slip, and that way, the money will be ready for us to begin the project in January. We'll actually start the extensive amount of the work in February and plan to pave by April. And plans for that include a 270-foot-long by 32-foot-deep retaining wall and some backfill. There are three accounts from which we'll be taking this. As we explained a few weeks ago, the city will be receiving a Community Development Block grant, and we received notification that the funding for that is $77,600. The other monies will be taken from the state highway tax money, approximately $31,400 from that account, which is account number 225, and that will be for the paving portion of the, of the project, for which that's an allowable expense under that account. The remaining portion, $191,000, will come from the wheel tax fund, account number 226. So those totaled, $31,400 from state highway, $191,000 from wheel tax, $77,600 from the CDBG grant, will total to $300,000 needed for the project. Any questions?
And the total cost of the project?
Three hundred thousand.
Okay. Which is right in line with other slips we've had along Columbia and Joneswood, times, multiple times.
Sunset.
And this retaining wall will be the metal pilings, as I understand it.
Down to the bedrock and into it.
Yeah, down to bedrock, yeah.
About 30 of them, I think.
So Director Stone has suggested this as a wintertime project, so that this will be in place for the, what might hopefully be the, before the wet season comes along in the spring, so we'll see some movement soon, we hope.
Hopefully not.
Not, that's the wrong word to use, okay. OPWC, Issue 1, grant application for Ohio Public Works...
This is last year's, last year we tried for it and did not get. This is the Public Works Issue 1 money, we're trying for North Court Street, if I remember.
Chris has this.
Okay, you have that up here?
Yeah, it's for, I can fill in some of the details, I'm sure you might have additional, but this is for the North Court Infrastructure Improvements Project. And the grant application is due November 1st, so we will need to move forward quickly next week with that, with an ordinance to begin that. The improvements would include the replacement of the storm tunnel under Court Street, repair of the storm line in front of the former Blue Gator, and brick pavement for the remainder of the street to Carpenter.
Again, Director Stone has told us that Court Street has an existing, underneath the brick and underneath the pavement, an existing old sandstone bridge, which is acting as a culvert under there, and he has not wanted to do any minor repairs until he could deal with that major one, and so we're hoping the funding would come through for this. So we'll see this and probably be asking to suspend it so that it can happen quickly.
This is a, for the application, to go for authorization for that. And again, we, it's a number scoring system. We were a little on the low side last time. We hope that will move itself up a little bit so we can actually win this one.
We actually ranked first until they applied local priorities, so it's indeed a very fundable project, so.
Good to hear. I don't know of any other miscellaneous on Finance and Personnel, however...
Obviously, I didn't have a totally to get, and you have one also. The key item under this $85,000, you know, in terms of the communications and Internet capabilities, is that we would buy our own FCC license, so there'd be no interference. And I wanted to point that out, that that was a key component there. As you know, there are cell towers going up and different entities who have strung things across the city, and we want to take ours off the public sector and have our own private licensure, so.
Also, it's going to help accept you get some interference, because everybody else uses it same way.
Would that be part of this?
It is, it is. That's probably one of the key components that I should have started with, next to the lightning arrestors, so.
Okay, Audrey, go ahead. Okay, my miscellaneous has to do with our debt and fund balance policy. I brought this up before. We actually started talking about this just about a year ago when we refinanced our bond for the community center. That was one of the requirements, was to come up with a policy to get our good bond rating, and it always was a draft, and we moved forward with our bond rating. However, I think it's time that we seriously consider and put this, you know, make this our actual policy. It involves really two things, of course, the debt fund balance and cash reserve policy are two different things, but they do go hand in hand. And just upfront, our debt, as far as our debt, our debt limit is much, much higher than we are anywhere near, and always has been. I haven't looked into it recently, but in years past, it was about 15 million, which we are not, you know, 50 million, anyway. We've never been anywhere close to being in trouble as far as our debt balance. But the cash reserve, one is the one that is making me a little nervous now, and we discussed this a little bit at our Finance Committee meeting last Thursday, and I handed out this draft policy, which was actually put together by our Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, last year. We had sent an email out requesting, we got a lot of samples from all over the state, and she put this together. What I also did and gave you as an extra sheet today is to show our carryover for the past nine years. I started in 2002 because that's the first year I was on council, was active in the city. So 2 and 3, I was on council, the rest of the years, I've been in the auditor's office. And as you can see, our carryover was not really stellar back in 2 and 3, and I remember knowing as a council member that we were going to struggle a little bit in 2004, which we did. Our income tax receipts actually went down 2% for the first time in years. And so then, we've done some different things and have brought that up, as you can see, for several years. However, it has started going down, and we went down just a little bit from 2009 to 10. So I guess at our high, we were at 1.3 million, and we're down to 835,000 carryover for this year. The bottom, 2011 monthly expenses, I thought I would just do current ones, so I did every other month this year, and those are monthly expenses in the general fund only. The average per month is $874,000. What I would recommend in doing research, and we can look at this closer, scares everybody to think the recommendations are 12 to 15%, however, ours has been around 14% our carryover of our budget. But we are dipping down, and I would not ask council to come up with a figure that they're not comfortable with, but I think it's very important that we make sure on January 1st that we have the cash in the bank to cover our expenses. Obviously, it would be nice to have, you know, two or three or four months reserve, but I think it's imperative that we try to have at least one month's total expenses in the bank. Now, we talk about cash fund, that would be your fund balance, not necessarily your unappropriated balance. So it's the amount of money that you have in the bank at any one time. And I will tell you right now that we have over a million dollars in the bank right now, but we also will have some pretty steep expenses for the month of October. As you can see, in May, I don't know that that's our highest month this year, but it really jumped up there, but we know about all the expenses with all the fests at the end of the school year that happened that month. We'll have another month like that in October and into November. So just something to keep in mind, if everybody would read the policy and see what you think, and then we could continue discussion. If you have any questions, anything you want to change, we can separate the policies and try to get an idea of how much we think. And as I said, this is saying that the general fund, not every fund can have a cash balance, you know, grant funds usually zero out and should, and things like that. So we're looking at the general fund, expenses, revenue, and fund balance, if you look at your reports. And just let me know, I guess, in the meantime, if you have any questions, otherwise we'll talk about it again in two weeks. Any more questions now?
Go ahead.
So really what you're looking at when you look at the sheet is we have one month of, let's say, bumper in the bank, it's like one paycheck's worth for the person on the street, so to speak.
That's what I would like to, I think that sounds reasonable. I think that what we need to do is, I wouldn't necessarily say bleeding, but kind of stop the bleeding. I don't want us to continue to go down in our carryover balance, which is what we've done the last four years, really, but now it's getting down to where our carryover wasn't even enough to pay all of, you know, an average month's expenses. Does that make sense?
There was some discussion in council office before this, because Finance and Personnel had received this earlier, and all members received it in their mailboxes. We were hoping that maybe in two weeks, the Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure, could be here too to add her take on it all, since she did put this together. But this is obviously timely, we're, we are about imminently, any moment now, going to start discussing the budget for 2012, and we always have worked with a strong impetus toward having a good carryover, but outside factors start eating away at their money, of course, so it's difficult, but this is, this is the time that we as council and the administration work together to put this together.
Right, and this, just to add to that, our carryover from last year, keep in mind, we had an almost $500,000 bump in tax revenue because of a special payout by a local business. And so that's half a million dollars right there, and that's, you know, included in the carryover, so.
Any other questions?
We won't have this year, we haven't had so far, anyway.
Questions? Member Gosman?
This is the first I'm reading through this, but on page five, it says, "The city has set a goal for the undesignated fund balance," and then it says approximately 60 days of funds, but I heard you saying 30 a minute ago.
Well, I mean, ideally, it would be nice. Those are the kinds of things that will have to change, and that's what everybody needs to look at. Is that practical to have 60 days? I'm not sure.
So I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing.
The discussion when we were going for the bond rating, which ended up to be, what, AA, was it?
Yeah, AA 2.
AA 2, was that this, they said this is what you need to put in place, some kind of policy. They did not say exactly what policy would be best in the world, and that's what Kathy's saying, is that you really have to say, how much do we want to strap ourselves to, what we can spend and not spend, how much carryover we want to keep in mind. And again, it's just, it's trying to put a policy in on how we balance, how to do the balance. Most of the time, we just aim at, you know, carryover, good carryover whenever possible, as much as possible, and make sure we have the revenues and resources. I think the first thing in our next budget building, we'll be looking at the projected resources. I haven't had a chance to talk to Kathy that much, and some of that will change, of course, of course, some of the grants that we did last year, like one and a half million dollars worth of buses, they're not going to be there. But that was, again, that's really just small bookkeeping, because it's passed through, many times, goes out the door as soon as it comes in.
So yes, those are the kind of things we want to question. I know council doesn't want to paint themselves into a corner. However, do keep in mind that this will be a council ordinance and can be changed, just as state and federal governments have struggled with raising their, you know, or lowering their, you know.
And again, we'll have changes...
Yeah, cash reserves policies, to adjust for the times and what's going on. So if we try something at the end of next year, doesn't look like we're going to meet that, council can make that change.
Comments, questions? More to come.
Okay, so the next really, in terms of budget making, the next one would be projected resources and...
On Monday.
On Monday?
Okay.
Next Monday?
It's done at a regular meeting, absolutely.
Good, thank you.
It's on the schedule, shouldn't it?
Yeah. Well, we have yet to really formalize the schedule.
You ready for member Paul and Planning and Development?
The Planning and Development Commission, the Planning Development Committee has, first on the agenda is sign regulations, and this was a recommendation from the City Planning, the City Planning Commission, recommended changes to the planning, to the code, Chapter 2303, 13, which regulates signs in the city. This is something that a subcommittee has been working on, a subcommittee that has been made up of a cross-section of people in the community, from landlords and citizens and neighborhood association people and city officials, and they've been working on this for quite a while, and this is the, you got this last week, and there's quite a few changes to the regulations, and I think that the regulations can be summed up as trying to clean up the city with all the different signs that sit out for long, rental signs especially, sit out for so long that they get blown over and are, many people think making the city look very tawdy. So I'd like Mayor Wild to talk about it, and we have a member from the subcommittee, Beverly Flanagan, so can you come up and, do you want to speak to it?
This is the work, this is a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I don't think everybody liked it entirely 100%. Some of the issues that really we want to address is the rental signs in particular. If you look at the present code, what we have is that real estate signs and rental signs have to be down two weeks after the tenant has moved in or this property's been sold. What it does not address in the passing, which has been a point of contention, is when you put them back up, both rental signs and real estate signs, because eventually your place will be sold someday. Rent, the next question is when they recycle and put the new rental signs up for the next year, the year after that, or five years in advance. Part of the intent, if you look at the sign ordinance, of course, is, you know, the intent is, you can read it first page of it, basically to eliminate light, make less confusion, make the city attractive, but not incur too much hindrance in terms of the businesses. What you ended up with here is a four to five-day period for signs to go up, really covers only R1s, it does not cover R2s or R3s of business. Signs required would be one and a half square feet, I believe, so you can read it, it's about 15 pages worth of material there. You should have some that are either shaded or highlighted or struck down, and I think you'll have to have a public hearing on it as well. So really, we're to address the signs that are going up and staying up forever, even though the place isn't rented. It had gone through about two, at least two task force, initial one, then one with equal number of landlords and neighborhood residents, just so they can work out their differences.
Well, I think that... Well, I think that, that something like this looks at trying to balance in the different property rights, aesthetics, economic development, and those sort of things within the community, community standards and, and stuff. So that's why I think it's great that it came out of, of a subcommittee of, of citizens and, and such. And I know that they worked long and hard on this. So I would like to say that it has gone through at least one public hearing at the planning commission level, and we will have a public hearing with this. And this has been put on the website, the changes.
I will make sure it is. I thought it was.
Okay.
I haven't checked myself.
Yes, so that people can look at the changes themselves. I don't want to go over because they are, you know, 15 pages of different.
Do you have copies of this, everything?
Different tables and, and such. So I will, we will plan a, a hearing on this and bring it forward. Beverly, do you have anything to?
Will it be one hearing or three?
Oh, the, it will be one public hearing, and then it will be, the ordinance will go through three readings. So, so I encourage people who have questions or comments to look at the, the ordinance, the proposed changes in the code on the website and get in touch with us if you have questions or concerns.
And.
Questions?
Just for clarification again, I think the subcommittee was comprised of a number of people from throughout the community, whether it was landlords, citizens, homeowners, correct?
Yeah.
So there's input from all corners.
Not everybody got what they wanted. Nobody got what they wanted, everything they wanted, I should say. So it's a, it's a compromise all around.
But I found it just briefly on the.
Come up to the.
Get to come up.
Thank you, Beverly.
I just want to say, we were, there were two members of each neighborhood associa, uh, each neighborhood association and about an equal number of landlords. Our votes were almost always unanimous. We really worked hard and we're all together, I think. And I want to impress that upon you. The main section that we dealt with is, is one solid block, which should be marked in yellow. And that's the main, that's the core of the, of the changes. And besides size, we talked about placement. We would like to see all rental signs attached to the front of the building next to the door, not up on the second floor, not on the pillars of the porch, and so on, and not in the yard. That would illuminate, for example, signs that are on poles, footed in concrete sometimes out in front of the house. And they would have to be down by, I think we said either October 15th or Halloween.
I think it was the 15th.
We kind of went back and forth on that. So the period would be very brief, and, and then it would be over until the next May or June or whatever it was. I didn't bring my copy with me. But, but we, we worked very hard on this, and I think we, we did a good job and had near unanimity, which is rare, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, Ms. Flanagan, I should have asked you before. Just for everybody who's watching, state your name and address, please.
Yeah, Beverly Flanagan, 132 North Lancaster Street.
Thank you.
I represent the West Side.
Thank you.
I, I think one of the, the comments from several people who talked to me about this from the committee who were landlords is, is that with the internet, with the listings that they can do, is that they, they thought that this was a fair sort of bargain, because most of them are now putting things on the internet. In truth, I think all the really nice places are already rented by word of mouth.
Yeah. They did know, though, that people do like to drive by, stop their cars, get out and look. And so, so having a short period of the year for this is fine with, with us.
Did I understand correctly that this not only, this isn't just rental signs, but this is, these are real estate signs as well?
Rental signs only.
Well, our, our main concern was rental signs, but the, the changes do go into real estate signs and also R2 and R3. But our, our main concern was R1, of course.
There is a new definition was put in called property managing sign.
Right.
That it's a, to make it a little bit different than real estate signs. So it's really aiming after rental signs. And unfortunately, I, I realize I don't have the latest version here, but I need to look inside that where it is. Part of the, part of the way is it must be removed after which, but there was actually an option, if it wasn't rented, they could actually, if they're approved by them, it would be landlord to say it's not rented, make it, have the signs extended, but they have to do it's not rented.
Some of us would like to see such a case appealed to the code office for permission. That wasn't resolved, but that's something you might want to consider. In other words, so that the code office would know that the building hasn't been rented and is going through a legitimate process of reposting. We, we didn't resolve that, but you might want to.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Long?
Yeah, so I looked at this a little bit last week. One of the things that I like is in R1 zones, rental properties are allowed to put a, a small sign such as, I don't, call it specific companies, but some of the rental properties have a nice little sign on the front of the house that has a phone number. And I think that's a, a good way to handle it. It doesn't, there's not a big four-word sign in front, yeah, it's, it's ugly and, you know, throwing brochures into, into the wind and things like that. So I like that section that applies to, I guess, business zones and R3. It looks like that's not allowed in R1 under this new proposal. And I'm wondering if that's, if that's something we, we want to get rid of. I know a lot of, looking at the zoning map there. I know there are several of those in R1 zones now, and I'm not sure how much of a nuisance they are, or if, I guess, something for us to consider.
I, I think the dialogue is, a lot of homeowners felt uncomfortable having all these rental signs in their neighborhood and all these plaques, name plaque saying, "These places are for rent." They feel that the three, by definition, are not for businesses.
Right.
And the interpretation is a rental is a business.
I, I guess that was the only comment that I have right now.
And I'll check and see if the latest version's on the web, should be.
Great, thank you. So we will schedule a public hearing for that? The Royal Week. The next order of business on my agenda is plan unit development, modifying the development Some people were concerned about PUDs going into an R1. So somebody asked that we discuss it tonight about possibly changing PUDs, the, the uses permitted in a PUD for R1 to restricting it only to single-family residences in the R1 zone. Do we have some discussion? Nancy?
All right, so I'm the person that was concerned. I was cutting the grass in the backyard, and I realized the size of Kevin Klein's pud with all those houses on it was the size of my yard. And I guess I decided that R1 districts probably need to be, have more protection than somebody, and I have nothing against Kevin Klein's project. I think it was fine. I think the zone is mis, probably could be zoned a different way, but if they did, the people that were used, that owned it would, you know, intensify it even more. So if you think of PUDs as little bitty new zones in the midst of other zones, then, you know, you'll understand where I'm coming from, I think. So could you buy two lots in Briarwood, it would be roughly the same size, and then up the hill and put something in, and would that be in the spirit of an R1 zone? And specifically, this doesn't exactly do, oh, 11, doesn't exactly do what I wanted, but we used to have, and I think old men used to, you know, the, the line, but it used to be in the zoning code, and I guess you would have had to been there to understand why it ended up in subdivision regulations. And it may be time to take it back to the zoning code, because it certainly has some, some issues in zoning. I think it's really not in our interest to allow we, these intensive redevelopments in R1 zones at this point. I don't think it serves the purpose of an R1 district. PUDs were designed to give developers an incentive to use a space in an effective way to create open space. In many places, they say, "Save half your space, move your units onto a very small part of the lot and have a lot of open space." And I would be hard-pressed in this town to see bang for the buck out of the land. Now, I know some people think we need to, you know, provide a lot more housing than we do. And, you know, I just, I guess that I'd like to see some kind of really stern limits on size. And in the old integrated residential development zone, 1969, they actually had some, and Debbie sought it out and found it for me. I think it was, what, four or four and R3 and, not allowed at all in an R1. And it was four, four acres required in an R.
R2.
R2 and eight acres, or no, it's something like that. I'm making it up as I go along, because I can't remember. But anyway, there was an acreage requirement. And I know one time the mayor, when he was in, sitting in the audience, was really furious with me about Colson's pud, right, back in the day. So I don't think that we want to go head on down this road, although I have nothing specific against Kevin Klein, without really thinking about protecting our R1 neighborhoods. Otherwise, why would we bother with zoning? I mean, what's the point? If the guy next door to you can just change the lot into a, or the next two lots into a residential development that is maybe good from their point of view, but might not be good for yours. I think if it's a single-family zone, it should stay a single-family zone. But there are some things that I grandfathered in, and I own one of them, so, you know, I can't really be too rigid about it. But I just, I think this doesn't do it, and this is an outright prohibition. I got a mixed message from Paul Logue about it, because we had talked. I told him I was very disquieted by the way that one went. I mean, I wasn't at all adverse to the project, but I didn't like the possibility that somebody had been working for two years on something like this and then, you know, sort of plunk it down in the middle of a residential area without anybody knowing, and there it is. "Oh, man, I put so much work into this, how can you possibly even question my ideas?" And, you know, the Athenian way is, and I, after four years, I can say it, everybody has a tenant that's going to only be home between 12 and 3:00 in the morning and doesn't drive a car and always walks without his shoes on in the house. So, I mean, you know, they're all, everybody's got the ideal tenant, and we've all seen some of the ideal tenants. So I don't think that's an argument. I, I don't think we have to intensify our land use to the point where we have that kind of thing going on. So I, I guess I'd like to have more discussion later on. We're putting a, you know, later on, we may not even get here, but I don't, you know, and it seems like planning commission has so much on its plate, I don't want to bring them into it, but I think the specter of PUDs and R1 zones on less than an acre is pretty scary from here on in. I mean, I just don't see that we should even consider such things. And they could be now talking to John Paskey right now, and we wouldn't even know until plunks on Paul's desk, right?
It'd be on the planning commission. And again, you have the public hearings on this, and you have a choice of voting it up or down as well.
Well, I think that in, in the, but, you know, not to, not to put too fine a point on, but I do think in the real world, if the developers put all that time into it and has it all polished up the way Klein did his, you, the neighbors probably aren't aware of what's going on until the last minute. And it's really not a just thing to do, it seems to me, to give, to have this kind of a pure full-blown in the middle of an R1 district. I mean, what you're doing is creating 1,000 different R1s, well, it's not going to be 1,000, but five or six, because that's what PUDs are. They're rezoning an area for a specific use.
You remember the plan your development were taking out of zoning code many years ago.
I just said that, yeah. And you'd have to have been there. I mean, it was.
I was there.
And you remember why?
And I was jumping up and down about it.
Yeah, well.
So I'm not adverse to what you're, you're suggesting here.
But I think, you know, it's just.
It provides an extra, it would mean that's really, anybody who wants to put one in an R1 would have to go get a variance.
Yes.
Yeah.
There is another barrier here.
Yeah, and it would be much more onerous.
Hmm.
And I think that's probably what has to happen. But, you know, the integrated development thing was in the 69 code. I mean, that's how I remember reading it. There weren't that many. The first time I actually saw a pud being proposed was Rebel Hill, which is up, which isn't, but it was proposed to be up there, the second one on Lincoln Street. It was where Rutherford's property is around where Stradron circles around and goes down the hill on Cable Lane.
Okay.
And they actually did have a, and I, it's too late to be walking down memory lane, but they did have all this open space down at the bottom of the hill. And they did, and it was actually, it was sole and room, and it was actually a pud. And it wasn't an R1.
Okay, realize now we have that 60% coverage for lots.
Mm-hmm.
And that's another guideline. Essentially, realize if we start saying, "Let's put a plan in your development and max out the coverage of that lot," they require at this point two variances if they went over 60%.
If it's in the zoning code.
60% for parking.
Yeah.
Now, again, we're still talking about R1s here.
Mm-hmm.
The variance that was required for this one is actually the size.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I, when I was in the audience when this was first moved into the subdivisions, I was concerned, because I think the strategic plan of '94, Mayor Hendrik, started up dropping, you know, hotel, apartment complexes in, on Mary Street, because they had large lots, which I didn't know of any large lots that I could think of at the time, except I was kind of concerned that that was a discussion that was going on, since I didn't, I couldn't visualize what lot they were talking about.
Oh, sure.
It was 50 by 100. It's not large.
50 by 100 isn't big enough.
No, it's not even, I don't think it's even up the code. So I, I'm not, I'm not objecting to this. I, I think it's a good idea, apply me some thought into it.
That's why I brought it up tonight. I just think R1s are, and those of you who live in really expensive neighborhoods, it's not a, it's probably not a threat, but if you live in my neighborhood or Briarwood, I mean, they'll probably be mad at me for saying that, but it doesn't matter anymore, because that's not a very expensive neighborhood in terms of what you could get out, what you could leverage out of, out of renting, I mean, out of taking the houses down and putting up something more intense. And the question is, do we really want that to be going on in this town? But we always have those Biffle PhDs walking around at 3:00 o'clock in the morning, never being there, not using cars. Anyway.
Never parking.
Never parking down the street, no parties, no drinking, no nothing. Yeah. I mean, we've heard it all from the developers, I haven't.
Right.
Okay, so I'm going to stop there, and you can go to your next one.
Well, I think that this is something that, that needs to be further developed with planner, and I would like to see some planning commission input on this.
We could bring it, ask it to add it to the next one.
Add it to, it's very onerous.
Right. Well, I don't, I don't know if it needs, it's not going to come up in the next few weeks, so.
Okay.
So, any questions?
It's just, I guess there's got to be a way to let the neighbors know before it gets full-blown and they have.
Well, maybe an early notification process would be needed, you know.
The variance process would require verification.
Right. So if this went through a very, you know, we can write in a, a different notification process of when you put your permit request in, you also have to notify the neighbors. I think that more notification in the neighborhoods is always better, so would be very.
So to summarize, this is suggesting that this would maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods of an R1 zone, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions, comments? And tonight, we're going to talk about the, the property that the city would, has been thinking about donating to Habitat for Humanity. And gentlemen are from here, are from Habitat for Humanity to speak to this project.
Okay. How can I, Ms. Perry, can you answer as well? Go ahead.
Well, my name is Kenneth Edwards. I'm the executive director of Athens County Habitat for Humanity. And I come to you tonight because we are ready to begin the process of fulfilling our obligation that we committed to as part of the grant that you have received. Because of that, because we're ready, we need to get moving on picking a site and then also getting surveys done and soil samples done on the site. And in the past, the, the property that has been discussed are the four lots on Alexander Street. All four lots are not large enough as single lots to accommodate housing based on code. So the lots will have to be resurveyed, and I'm requesting the bottom two lots for the purposes of, of building a Habitat House on those, those lots. However, as, as part of the, the grant funding, we can, we can do the survey, but I don't feel comfortable going to my board and commit funding to having the survey done until I have some sort of confirmation from council about the donation of the land. have some sort of confirmation from council about the donation of the land.
Essentially, this is part of the CHIP grant we apply for and receive, the $500-plus to $1,000. It's a little bit different mix. In the past, we've done housing rehab, rebuilding, and some down payment assistance. We charted different strategy this time, including a Habitat for Humanity house within a city limits. It's always been difficult to put one in city limits because of the cost of lots that it has to acquire, as well as the subsequent building and surveying and excavation. We have four lots there. The average, I think, of small zones, about 3,500, the largest is about maybe 30, 4,800 square feet. The requirement for city code is 8,000 square feet, I believe, for a lot, in a flat, so two of them will have to be combined. We went back and forth on what's lots, two lots to vacate, which is what we'll be asking council on needs to do. The bottom two probably have less, require less excavation. We have a chaining wall there where Alexander meets Patton, I believe.
On the back.
Right?
Up on the back?
Yeah, up on the back. That's probably, we'll have to, need some maintenance someday, so we'd rather not build up against that if need be. I know that it's been used as a pocket park for many years, but in the, with the desire of actually having more diversity of housing, I'd like to see this happen. I know there's some fruit trees that have been planted. We probably transplant those if need be. I don't know if there's, I think they were on the top two lots, if my memory is correct. Again, this is to try and address the need of housing. I don't know what else to add to that at this point, except that that requires an act of council, like any vacation of rights away or city property.
Another I might add is that Habitat Build also meets a 12.5% match requirement, too, so it's very important that they pay more work for that, on that aspect of it.
Now, have you contacted the neighbors around this area? I think, I know I've heard some concern from.
I have not talked to those lately, which I think is someone that's most concerned about.
Well, I think that this is another instance where, you know, communication with the neighbors, instead of having the backhoe show up one day and everybody come running out and saying, "What are you doing?" You know, getting people on board ahead of time and making a flyer or something that says, "This is our plan and this is what we would like to do." I think that that's, I think that the Comprehensive Plan talks about diversity of housing, and I think that it's a, it's a really important goal that we have in town, and so we just need to communicate so people don't feel like they're, they're not being told what's going on and all of a sudden, big, heavy equipment. I think when big, heavy equipment shows up, people get a little defensive, no matter, you know, even if it's not in their backyard, it's across the street, or, so, I would like to see some communication going on, so.
Particularly with the residents, they're always, the ones that have to live there.
Yes, so.
But, you know, just a flyer would help, right?
Yes.
But some of it's rental property, as I recall, isn't it? Quite a bit.
I think those.
This location was identified because it's close to the bus line. It's a walkable, livable community.
No, I don't think that there's a problem.
People walk to East elementary.
No, there's no problem.
It's not like we haven't discussed this, and I understand that everybody watches city council or reads the newspaper, that I would say this is probably about our third, if not more, discussion.
But not every, I think that people who live right near, it always, it's a courtesy to, to say, "Hey, this is, you know." So, and it's a good outreach, you know, people know what's going on. I think that's always supposed to, you know, like AEP coming up in your backyard, which they're really, really bad about telling people what's going on, and then, so we wanna set a good example. So, that's what I would suggest. We have talked about this numerous times, and I don't see a problem with it coming forward.
So, we could have an ordinance up, and we could, on this hypothetical handout, say that council will be reading an ordinance on next Monday, and if you have a problem, come. I mean, the pertinent information is it's a single-family house in an R1 zone, right?
Right. So.
Yeah, I do want to stress as well that we are on a timetable here with the grant funding, and I can, we, our building schedule allows for us, for volunteers to build on site, so we, you know, we can't erect a house in 30 days. So, you know, we need to get moving on this and make it happen now, so that when the spring comes around and building season hits, we can hit the ground running on it, because we are, we are in a position now where we're ready to move on it.
You could add that to your information, volunteers.
Yep.
Welcome.
So, you, yeah, this time, you should. I don't see any trouble. I just would like more information out to the neighbors. And there's not, it's not a huge neighborhood. I just think that it would be, you know, nice to see interaction and outreach.
I understand, but I, once again, I don't feel comfortable getting the survey done until I have some sort of commitment, because that's money that's coming out of our pocket. I don't foresee, I want some sort of solid commitment from council saying, "These are the two lots that we're going to donate or vacate," so that we can move forward with it.
Well, I think that we can bring a ordinance out.
And that'll start.
And at the same time, you can do outreach, so.
Yeah. As long as the suppliers get it.
Yeah, I just think that it's really important, and personal contact and information, because we've had problems with other projects that just started off badly with information being, you know, put towards neighbors, and that just doesn't help anybody, so.
Sure.
So we'll take three readings, is what they're saying.
It will take three readings.
A month and a half. We can get word out fast. You were talking about, it's about energy rating. I think you're talking about energy-efficient housing. It's gotta be built up to certain standards, right?
Yeah, we typically build at Energy Star 2.0 right now, so, we, our, our goal is to build simple, decent, affordable homes, so our intent is to keep it as affordable as possible, but at the same time, be able to allow for energy efficiency in the home itself. And, you know, that's one of the benefits to what we do with our dealing with low-income housing. We try our best to accommodate those needs at the beginning and also at the end, once the house closes, so the utility bills are low, and things like that.
Great.
A couple of clarifications. Is this one house or two that would be built?
Oh, one house.
One house on the four lots, though, or determined?
Two lots.
Two lots, okay.
Well, we're saying two lots. The survey, that's, we're gonna have to have the survey conducted that will determine if it's a singular lot, correct?
Sure, now, and all due respect, I know you understand, I understand you have a timeline, but this is the first time that I've seen you here regarding this. I know we've talked about it, but I understand a timeline issue. In addition, well, I'll just leave it at that, but, thanks.
Debbie was saying that we can't do an ordinance necessarily, you'll find this out, without a survey, so it's the chicken and the egg. So, we need a survey in order to vacate, in order to have an ordinance.
Wait a second, if we have two lots in record, we can do two lots of records. If we want to do a lot and a half, then we have to do a survey. From my point of view, two lots is just as good as a lot and a half.
Okay.
I mean, we have five lots, we can give you the parcel numbers right now.
That's all you need?
Okay. That's all I have to remember. We can just, two lots.
Just make it two.
Yeah.
Do you tell us what two, and?
We don't forget what the parcel numbers are. 19, 18, or the other way around, 16, 17.
So, you'll figure that out?
Yes.
We'll get the ordinance, and we'll be ready to go.
Thank you. So we will bring that up next week.
Thank you.
So, thank you. I think that this is a good partnership between the city and Habitat for Humanity.
Absolutely. My volunteers and my coalitions are excited. This, this build will be, the woman power in this build will be the Women's Coalition.
That's great.
So, they are ready to go. They ask every day about it.
Uh-huh, great.
We are ready to roll.
The guys are allowed to help, too.
Oh, yeah, well.
Clean up around the yard.
Yes, yeah.
Milk it out.
Okay. Is there any miscellaneous? I don't have any miscellaneous.
Services will not take very much time. The Grand Vista Village Development needs a water line, needs us to accept the water line easement that they provided to us. And Debbie has the original, and so we'll be in ordinance to take care of that work. I believe that this is one of those places where there'll be a bike. Is that true? A bike? The bike path?
I think that was the plan Andy Stone was talking about, is actually, essentially putting in one that would link University of State's Boulevard or Grand Vista to the old Alphazill Road.
Okay.
That was a conversation I had. I try and visualize, because the elevation's pretty steep, but I imagine those.
It's for the younger people, I guess, huh?
It'd be fun going down.
Switch back.
Oh, if you like Sam Lombard Street.
Yeah, Lombard Street.
So, Grand Vista water line easement will be coming up.
Could be a twist.
Another, well, I'll just stop there. If there's any miscellaneous, have at it.
I don't have any miscellaneous.
Okay.
Committee of the whole. Requested by member Gosney.
I don't have much here tonight. After our discussion last time on fracking, I was looking at possibly moving forward with an ordinance that cites the state law with the 20-mile regulation that allows the city to, at least some latitude in terms of regulating threats to the water supply. And so, just to let everyone know, that's being worked on. Probably, if we have something two weeks from now, I'll make sure I have that available beforehand for everyone to look at. And probably, we would be moving forward with something else that would take a little bit longer to put together, that would be more holistic, but something specific quickly as this land sale of Wayne National Forest is proposed for December, sometime in the middle of December. So, something shorter and quicker addressing this, and then possibly something Member Butler's been working on with some others that would take a longer time to put together. So, that's, that's all I have.
And again, thanks for putting the letter together for the, to protest the sale of Wayne National Forest by the U.S. Land Management. I know, I sent one out as well, as you know, Dr. McDavid sent one, and well, I had the texting committee also put drafts of the letters.
And the commissioners also sent one.
Every commissioner, so.
Did Nelsonville send one?
I have, yeah, I assume they did. I know Josiah's working on one. I hope we got it in on timeline. It was a pretty, first turnaround we needed to have there. I do not know if Berleth got one in, because I say all their walls are downstream of this, nor Leax, but I know there was discussion.
We tried. That's an impressive turnaround in lots in a week. You know, I think that everybody should be very commended about being on top of it and concerned.
Having concerned citizens always happens.
Right. I think that that's, that's impressive. So, I want to say thank you to everybody who worked so hard.
Does he have something else?
Yeah, under miscellaneous, regarding the AEP franchise agreement, there was a request from AEP to have another temporary extension while they look at some of the things proposed. And one reason is that the PUCO is going to change, might possibly change part of the distribution and generation fees, and so that would be ruled on by the end of the year. And so having that finished, they think will help, help them analyze the proposal.
Definitely, they were just trying to get done with all the trimming they had to do before we had the landscaping laws, and they've done some massacres.
Well, I hope that's not the case. So, we may be seeing another temporary extension of that, while some of the other details are worked out.
So you need to put an ordinance together.
Anything else for committee night? We will call city council closed at 8:07. Sir, you walked in late. Did you want to talk to us?
Well, I'm never shy with words, but.
If you want to, please come up to the podium and give us your name.
I was only glad you brought it up a second ago. I was coming here to.
Right. This is Alan, Alan McMillan, who worked on the sign ordinance.
Yeah, Alan McMillan, 209 East State Street. So, I imagine, I talked to Beverly, so it's moving along as preliminary form, and that was great. We appreciate the community that, it was a meeting here not too long ago, and then set us off to a group of community leaders and then landlords and tried to come up with some common ground, and I think, I think that worked out, so I'm hoping that will. The other thing, you mentioned the trees along East State Street were brokenhearted, you know? You, you went ahead and, or I guess AEP did that, or whoever, they, they did that?
We didn't. We did not.
We didn't.
Okay. Well, you know, there has to be some, some way, because we want to plant a series of trees. We have that whole property, two, two properties together, and we want to do something thoughtful. And my wife and I looked at each other and said, "What's gonna happen when they grow?" I mean, we want to put some nice, the canopies from one side of the street and out the other. You know, we had this thing about a historic district and, and all that, and then they just came through and hacked it. So, I wouldn't have said anything, but since you pointed and said, "Hey, here's the microphone, I'm never quite shy," but we were brokenhearted about the trees, and, but I don't know what else to do, because the wind comes and the power goes away, and you don't want that to happen either, and short of bury the lines, and someone will say there's not enough money for that.